The 23rd of May, 2023, beginning at 7:03 PM at the Newton Town Hall. First thing on the agenda, I would like to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So the first thing on the agenda tonight is a public hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would you like to put Mr. Gibbons in a seat?
Thank you for the clarification or point of order.
Thank you.
Yes, please. We good now? Do we have to make it? There's no need to make a motion, correct?
I'm putting in, in place of Ms. Burke because Mr. Ryan may be here a few minutes late.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So the first thing on the agenda tonight for the public hearings is Christopher Sparks of Newton, New Hampshire requests a public hearing for a non-retail home-based business. So it's a flooring business at 85 Peaslee Crossing Street, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 7, Block 6, Lot 16-2. Ms. Rowden, do you have anything to add?
The application appears complete. It's a fairly straightforward operation. Couple of questions if you can answer to, you know, how many folks you think may be coming to your home-based business, if you have any vehicles, if you have any other employees. Basically, the narrative of tell us about what you're proposing to do.
Sure. If you want to get up to the microphone, please. Thank you.
So basically, no customers will be coming to the residence or the business address. One business vehicle, which is an F-250, if you need to know that. The gross vehicle weight is 10,000 pounds.
Any employees?
No employees, nope. I'm a sole proprietor, yep.
And really, any kind of deliveries that would get made to your residence?
Rarely, maybe some supplies or materials for a job. Never anything substantial. Most of that is delivered to the job site. Trash is disposed of either in dumpsters on the job site or at a commercial landfill like G-Mellow or Holt Road in North Andover. So basically, just using to look that, use that as our home base, you know, home office and for tool storage, so.
You are aware, though, that you can put a sign out in front of your property. It is, refresh my memory, Jim, the dimensions on that?
Two square feet.
What is it, Jim?
Two square feet.
Two square feet.
Okay.
If you want during business hours, you can have it out there.
Okay. All right. Good to know.
Just for a little extra publicity.
Exposure.
Yep, exposure.
All right.
One other quick question. You mentioned that you might be doing a little bit of mill work on the site. What kind of tools are you using?
Table saw, miter saw, just basically like if we're installing a set of stairs or something, I might be prepping the cuts the night before just to pack them and, you know, make them easier to handle pretty much, so.
So in your letter, you'll be doing it inside the shop garage area, so it'll be done inside, not outside?
Correct.
That's all I have.
And what did you have down for your business hours? I know I saw it earlier.
Typically about 8:00 to 4:00.
8:00 to 4:00.
Yeah, Monday through Friday, sometimes Saturday, under protest.
On your application, you've got 7:30 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday. If you think you might need a little buffer on that, it's good to amend it now.
Okay. Yep. I mean, that may be a little more accurate, yeah, 7:30 to 4:30.
And Monday through Friday?
Yes, yeah, yep.
And Saturday, potentially?
Yeah, potentially, yes. Very rarely, yes.
And while there is no noise ordinance in town, we, that's why, like Jen said, that little bit of leeway is always nice to have.
Yep, yeah. I mean, obviously, I would respect my neighbors and never make any cuts before a reasonable time, you know?
Right.
Yeah. That would usually be done in the afternoon, like if I return from a job, if I have to prep something for the next day, I would do that, you know?
Barbara, do you have anything to add?
No, that's good because I was going to suggest extending the, the working hours also to cover the bases. He might want to include Sunday, too, in case he needs to prep something on Sunday for Monday?
Okay, yeah.
So just to be clear, you want to amend your hours of operation to 7:30 AM to 4:30 PM, seven days a week?
Sure, yeah.
That's, okay. It's just so it's recorded correctly.
Yeah.
Any other questions in the board? How about the public? I don't think we have anybody online either.
A quick question for you.
Sure.
Do you have any, are you, I see, you know, you're not storing any trash or, you know, dumping anything?
Nope.
Do you have, will you have materials or storage?
Sometimes, yeah. I will have some flooring and stair treads and stuff like that in the shop area.
Probably for the job and then?
Correct, and then bringing them to the job site.
Yep.
Okay. I don't have anything else.
No.
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'd recommend your standard conditions of approval on this.
Sure. So can I have a motion with the, can I do the findings of facts? Or does the person making the motion have to do the finding of facts?
You can state what you think are the finding of facts, and the person making the motion can agree with you.
Can you take jurisdiction first?
So I'm going to make a motion based?
We do like to take jurisdiction. We actually never took jurisdiction of the application.
That's true. I recommend completion. Yep, Jim's correct.
Make a motion to take jurisdiction? Second.
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
I'll put it in the right place in the minutes.
Thank you.
I did recommend facts and condition.
I have it all right here. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve Christopher Sparks' business permit for his home business based on the facts that we found the plan falls within the scope of the applicable zoning and site plan regulations for a non-retail home-based business, and that justice would be served by approving this application and under the following conditions, that one, he obtains a Newton business occupancy permit, and a couple others for ongoing, that you'll have to make sure that you stay within the parameters of no outdoor storage of business-related materials. All business shall take place inside the home or off-site, and your hours of operation shall not detract from the quality of your neighborhood.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Barbara.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. So you are free to go unless you want to hang out for a little while.
Congratulations.
Just one thing since talking to the building department, the planning board chair or designee will now be required to sign up on the business occupancy permits.
Okay. Could I designate like you?
I was just going to say you could designate me for all but one developer.
Yep. For this application, could I designate you? And we'll do a case by case.
Can you designate me?
Is that better?
No, you, so you can't.
No, I was looking at Jim.
Okay, sorry.
No, no, no. I'm the designee for all except for that one developer.
That doesn't really affect you.
So Jim will take care of everything that you're going to end up needing?
Yeah, Thursday, I'll be doing the notice of decision, which I'll record Thursday afternoon, and you'll have a copy of that in the mail probably Saturday or next Monday. I'll let downstairs know so you'll be able to register your truck, and you'll have to see the building department or the business occupancy permit.
All right, great. Thank you, guys.
Good luck, Mr. Sparks. Congratulations.
Next is board business, so acceptance of the minutes from May 9th, 2023.
Motion to accept the minutes of the meeting on 5/9/23?
Second.
Second. This is Barbara.
Barbara lost that time.
Ms. Eddy beat you.
All right.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Next is approval or acceptance of the NEPR manifest. Now, this is a little bit different than I have seen, I think everybody on the board has seen. We have three of them.
Yes.
Do you want to explain?
One is, one is the standard bills that come in applicable to applications. The second one is a closeout manifest. That is for applications that have been completed, plans have been recorded. This is the money they get back that was not spent. And the third one is for processing fees, which the board charges per item that is done. That covers the cost of checks. I actually did put this in an email. It covers the cost of checks, and it covers the cost of mailing out the bills.
And that was recently changed, regulations to offset the amount of time that, I'll say, we, you, were spending on applications, correct?
No, actually, this is something that the board put in about two years ago, the application fees. I just wait until there's enough.
Okay.
So what I do is that they're completely separate manifests. Makes it easier for the treasurer, and then when the, it goes to the accountants for the annual audit, they can actually see why is there what appears, I hate the expression, but somebody used it, a slush fund with like $30 in it? That's where I go when the office needs postage, because most of what I mail out is like, with the gentleman that just left, I have to mail out his notice of decision to him. I have no way of recouping any of that money, so this way it does. When we, when I send out the check for KB Partners, there's no way of recouping that money, so by instituting that fee a couple of years ago, it ends up being a very small fund, but that, that's my resource, so taxpayers are not paying for postage, and you'd be amazed at what checks cost nowadays.
Okay.
Motion to accept NEPR manifest?
Do I have to read the amount? Is there a certain order you want to go in, Jim? I'm just asking you for your ease.
Unless you have questions.
I do not.
There are three of them. The NEPR manifest itself is $420. The closeout manifest, which is $525.99, that's divided into five individual parties, and the processing fee manifest comes from five different applications, and that's for $20.25.
Can I just clarify? You said five, for the closeout, 500, it's 725.99. I think you just flipped the two numbers.
Did I say? Oh, okay, yeah, 725.99.
Can we group those in one approval?
Okay.
So Mr. Marshon?
Okay.
Motion.
Motion to approve said manifest?
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And next, it's not on the agenda I have in front of me, but I think Ms. Rowden has a quick update.
Sure. So do you guys want to do the circuit rider contract first, or do you want me to do the Invest New Hampshire Housing thing first?
Do the circuit rider.
Okay. So every year, so RPC has been contracting with Newton since, I think, 2003 for circuit rider services, so we've been acting as your consultant planner. I've been with you for about 10 years at this point. This is yours, every year, the contract goes from July 1st to June 30th, so this is the time of year we ask to see if you want to renew. So the contract you have before you includes a slight increase in fees because costs have gone up, but it's the same level of service you guys have always had, so it's two meetings a month, it's me providing a little bit of technical assistance every month, it's minor zoning things that we might get into in the fall, and then reviewing applications, and then, as need be, sort of answering questions for Jim or applicants as they come in.
Jim, sorry.
On this, anything that goes above and beyond that, or anything that I can apply to a specific application, is actually billed to their NEPR accounts in order to recoup for the town. There have been some applications just recently when it was withdrawn that had a few hundred dollars for technical review by the circuit rider, because she submits hourly bills for, for those type of projects. That saves us on our budget a little bit.
I will say also, any of the housing work I'm doing is being paid for by the housing grant you guys received, so it kind of offsets some of the time. I will say there's, there's a reasonable chance that the rate that we're, so the rate we use for circuit riding is across all of the towns that we do consultant planning for. Those rates might change going forward depending on which planner you have. It would still be me, but I'm the most senior planner, so the rate could go up for next year. You'd be given a year notice effectively, so it can be included for budgetary purposes, but if you might see that in a couple of months, just that's the reason for it.
I'm keeping track of the money, and as an RPC executive committee member, I can tell you that Newton is paying nowhere near the value of Jim. Notice the way I phrase that, the value of.
Appreciate it.
Can I ask Jim a question? Could you tell me how much the increase is this year, please?
I don't have the overall increase. It's about, I think by about $800. The rate went from $70 per hour to $73 per hour, and it's 183 hours, so about 600 hour, $600.
4%.
Okay, thank you.
Said 4%, it's not bad. $73 for consulting services is.
Yeah.
It's reasonable.
I was going to say with the cost of everything else that's going up, that's well within reason.
So do I need a motion to approve this contract?
I was just going to say I make a motion that we accept the next circuit rider contract.
For a, authorizing the chair to sign.
Right.
Thank you. And just for everybody's information, it's for a not to, maximum total, I'm guessing not to exceed, for the 102 hours of services, or whatever you just said?
13,359.
Thank you. For the contract period. I would say that not to exceed.
And we bill twice a year for that.
Yes.
Right.
No, actually.
I'm sorry, we bill monthly. We used to bill twice a year.
I was just going to say the default budget leaves that line item approximately 600, actually, I just realized, it's roughly $600 shy of what that contract calls for, but the budget is still fairly, in fairly good shape, though I still anticipate it running out the end of October. But at this point, it's, I'm doing whatever I can to, you know, to pinch pennies, but is there a second on that?
I'll make the second.
Mr. Gibbons?
That's your problem, Bob.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Ms. Marshon, sorry, Ms. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Can, for the witness, can it be anybody here?
It can be anybody here.
I'll witness it for you.
Okay. Perfect.
Next item?
Housing grants.
All right. This is a real quick update, but I did want to just ask, did anybody have any thoughts coming out of our presentation or questions from the last time? It's okay, I'm putting you all on the spot, so I'm just curious.
No, I thought it was, I mean, all the information, it was quite a bit of information, but it was all like on point to what's taking place, so.
I thought it was very informative, I mean, going through everything.
I just had the same question as last time. What happens if we don't do it? Do we get fined as a town?
If you are not in compliance with the state workforce housing law, and there's a lot of ways you can be in compliance, then a, and you're likely not in compliance with the workforce housing law, but no community in southern New Hampshire is because there's a lack of workforce housing. So if you do not have that, then a developer could come in and state that you are not meeting your workforce housing, and by doing that, be allowed to do development. It still has to meet your basic environmental regulations, health, safety, but would be allowed to build more densely than your basic zoning currently allows. That's kind of like the concise answer to it. It has happened. There have been communities that have had to go to, been challenged and have gone to court over it, especially if a planning board or a zoning board has denied an application because of it. It's a long slog, and I don't foresee anything in Newton's future of that immensity. I mean, it's, it's possible, but the goal of this housing grant is to put you on good, not only making sure you're meeting your community goals and having conversations, but good legal footing so that if you were to be, if you're not in compliance, that you are then making reasonable attempts to be in compliance, and that if you were, if you are in compliance with the workforce housing, that if there were a legal challenge, you have solid footing for why your regulations are saying one thing or another. Thank you. And that is something that will be described as part of any of the outreach that we do for this, and as part of the master plan that we're currently sort of drafting some of the background information for you into. So that's sort of leading into my next point, is that, that's what I'm doing right now with, it's myself and our staff at the RPC, is pulling in for the master plan chapter, trying to draft the background information that's more of the technical aspects, pulling in your vision from your master plan, commentary we've gotten from previous surveys, the land use chapter you guys did, pulling in all of the resources as we have a conversation about housing. So that'll be what I'm hoping to present at your second meeting in June, to at least give you like that more comprehensive background about Newton and what Newton has said about housing and what the Newton statistics are as we move into the outreach and education phase.
Sorry, I'm getting my calendar.
First of all, as time will allow, I've made a transcript of the, of Ms. Rowden's speech of the, what she talked about at the last meeting. Once I have a chance to edit it down into a readable versus a, the transcript is as it's spoken, as soon as it's condensed into a readable, something shorter than the 27 pages it now runs, I will put that together and actually save it as a pamphlet and give everybody a copy so that you can reread through it and see what she was referring to. On the other end, the ZBA did last year approve a density on 20 acres of upland and wetland, 44 bedrooms that could be built as quote workforce, potential workforce housing. That at least works in the town's favor in that the application was not denied by the ZBA, but they were a lot, because it's two lots, technically, you're only allowed to build two dwelling units. They were allowed to build multiple dwelling units to a maximum of number of bedrooms, which they felt could be sustained by the, the land. So that's, there's evidence that Newton is actually not opposed to workforce housing.
That plan to ever come to fruition would have to come through the planning board, and it has not.
It hasn't come, yeah.
Do you have?
If I could interject something, it also initially was presented as it might be workforce housing, and then that was rescinded, so it wasn't put in as specifically as workforce housing, but it's, there's still a possibility for that to happen if the developer decided to change that.
That is true. I will say that what I know of the application, because again, I predominantly worked with the planning board, many of the units they were proposing were one-bedroom units, which they're workforce housing under the state law, at least 50% of the units have to be two or more bedrooms, because it's accommodating families is the intent, and then no more than 20% of it can be age restricted, so you could have 20% be like a 55-plus kind of community. So if that application comes in, we'll have to go through a whole lot of tests to see like what it complies with, what it doesn't, but until it does, you know, it's only conceptual, really.
And when all is said and done with this, Jim, that you're going to end up having some recommendations for where we might be able to?
I am, that's the.
Some things, correct?
Yep, so the, in addition to doing the master plan that has all the background data and all that, we're doing the regulatory audit, which is looking at your land use regulations and a few select board fire building codes to see where you have opportunities to make tweaks to increase the ability for housing opportunity, and also identifies areas you may not want to make compromises, mainly environmental regulations tend to fit in that because there are barriers there for a reason, and it'll include pros, cons, is there support in the community, how likely is the proposed change to result in housing, and then there might be a few recommendations of regulations you don't have on the books, but you may want to consider.
Question, it might be silly.
There are no silly questions.
But, I mean, there's more to it than just, you know, the structures, right?
Absolutely.
There's, you know, transportation or better access to, you know, highways and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Is that kind of part of what we are looking at, or are we strictly focused on the buildings and the zone?
We are definitely not strictly looking at the buildings. Part of the master plan will certainly pull in other topic areas, and when we're asking people about housing. And when we're asking people about housing, bringing up all of the related things that do go into housing will certainly be part of the conversation. Yep. Think of it be, while we are talking about housing, that's the grant. Think about it as housing as a component of community development. And you think of Newton and then a little bit beyond Newton because, but housing doesn't stop at your borders. But what you can do about it does. So yes, we will certainly be talking about those other topics. I'm really glad that you're thinking that we'll be talking about the other topics because we should be. The land use audit will largely focus on the housing component of it. I can get into a few things like access management and bike and pedestrian sort of accommodations and how that can tie in. The audit won't get into a lot as far as recommendations for what you can do on those topics unless they are very directly related to the housing. That's the one probably caveat I need to give you. That's it, that's all I have. Oh, actually, one other request of you guys.
Oh, too late, you said you were done.
This is easy, it's homework, but it's easy. If there is housing in Newton that you think is a really good example of things you would maybe like to see more of, or things that you really don't want to see, Newton is helpful for me to have photos of, or nearby communities where you see like, hey, I like that. Even if you can't describe fully what that, I'm gonna say multifamily house is, you can tell it's a couple of units, but you like the look of it. Or you really hate it, or you see what looks like two detached duplexes, and one might be an accessory dwelling, and it's really two houses on one lot. If you see things you like or don't like, and you're able to take a picture, and you're willing to send it to me, please do. I will try to not use super recognizable houses in Newton unless they are considered shining examples, just because things can be so identifiable. I do have the picture up on 108, yeah, 108 of the new construction going in.
Fitzpatrick, Fitzgerald. Fitzpatrick, Fitzgerald?
Yeah, Todd.
Todd, Todd.
Todd Fitzgerald.
Fitzgerald.
Property that he is developing, kind of efficiency cottages. They're multifamily, got approved a couple of years ago. I think it's, is it six units?
Six units. 650 square feet, they were small.
Yeah, they are small. You know, they're not, they don't have income restrictions, but just based on their size and configuration, less expensive. So I've got a photo of that as a nice example. But there's other things around here that might be good examples or not good examples. So please share them with me.
And there was what, three units, four units there before?
Yes.
Only one was occupied?
Yes, and they were not in good condition.
And if you come across anything, please keep in mind that one of the regulations that are in town about structural buildings is no bigger than two stories because of our fire equipment in town. We are only able to maintain services that would help to put out a fire, two levels high. Anything above that would create a very hazardous situation for our firefighters and the town.
So your height limit is 35?
Right, because we would not be able to respond to that properly.
And that's a very reasonable thing. I mean, I don't think you're likely to get big high-rise apartments in Newton anytime soon. I suspect folks don't want that, but.
Oh, and actually, yesterday, I had somebody in looking to find out where Newton stands regarding tiny houses. I explained to the person that while the board has appreciated it in the past and has started to look into it, our schedule just became so bogged down that that's one of the things that it's still on the back burner, hasn't disappeared completely.
So you guys do not have a limit, a minimum dwelling size like a lot of communities do? So really, a tiny house, if it's got a foundation, is really just a very small house. If it's on wheels, that's a whole other ballgame, but.
And that's what this person was talking about, what they wanted to know.
On wheels would be treated effectively like a RV for dwelling purposes and being able to permanently be on a site. Very small homes that are on a foundation are just very small homes, that's how they'd be treated. You guys don't explicitly have a tiny home or cluster home ordinance. That's something that we certainly are gonna need to explore as far as options. There are some towns that do have them or have allowed such development, they can be effective.
Hampton's one of the closer ones, correct? Is that?
Hampton does not have one.
They just have some very tiny homes.
They do have, they have a lot of the little beach cottages.
On, what is that? They're paving it, I should know this, High Street?
Yes. They do have some.
The key thing is like you were saying, foundation and septic.
Yep.
It's gotta have its own septic.
And they're under the building code, it's Appendix Q. It was adopted a couple of years ago, International Building Code. They are different building code requirements for tiny homes, which under that are anything 400 square feet or smaller to allow like a lofted bedroom, the stairs can be narrower. But you still have to have septic and water. You can't just have like a hose running from the main dwelling to the accessory apartment, so.
Yeah, I think the one thing that we would have to take up, like you were talking about, Jen, is the clusters in order for it to come in, to meet our zoning regulations. That would have to be a newly ordinance put in place to be able to do that, correct?
And there are ways of doing it.
Yeah.
That are not necessarily gonna go wildly against the current zoning that you have. So they may be, they may be an option that we can look into because they sort of fit similar zoning aspects you already have on the books.
Right. And say maybe a certain, like you said earlier, a certain area of town that that would fit into to be able, to be able to do that, so we could specify that one area of town.
Is it usually done with?
Or you can specify, because when we looked into this a couple of years ago, what we looked at were lots of a certain size.
Right.
So that, I mean, it could end up being anywhere in town, but you had to have a minimum of, I believe, one of the things that we discussed was five acres.
Right.
How many units that could hold and how they could be placed on the land so that, in theory, a tiny house usually has one to two occupants. It's usually the equivalent of one bedroom. So you could have small clusters where you'd have, say, four tiny houses sharing one septic tank, one leach field. But that was about as far as the planning board got. And then COVID hit, and that stuff sort of went off to the side. I can pull back out any of the paperwork that was discussed about that. However, I think there's enough on the board's plate with all the stuff that Ms. Ralston's doing presently for the board, for the rest of the things. And that's what I explained to this person is, you know.
But tiny homes, cottages, cluster cottages are something that we will certainly explore as part of the audit. And if you guys want to do a phase three of like implementing things, we'll go get grant funds to do it.
All right, sounds good. So is that it, really?
That is really it. I just wanted you to take photos, and then you kept asking questions, which is awesome.
Anything else? Barbara? Members of the public?
Thank you.
All right, duly noticed, then.
So I would like to adjourn the meeting at 7:42. Thank you. And I need to go sign my hours.